Pledge of Allegiance. Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I can read our board's purpose and then also direct the board and our audience to our working agreements, our mission vision, and our core values, which provide all of our actions, words, and deeds. The board will govern lawfully with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal preoccupation, diversity of viewpoints, and sufficient understanding of issues. Strategic leadership more than administrative detail. Clear distinction of board and chief executive roles. Collective rather than individual decisions. Future rather than past or present, and proactivity rather than reactivity. Take just again thirty seconds, six if you need, for the board agreements and mission core values around ourselves and our work. There's any comments on any of those? I'll take that now. Do a roll call.
Johnson?
Here.
Moeen?
Here.
Sharon?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Bitovich?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second. Any votes?
Okay. Johnson?
Hi.
Moeen?
Hi.
Sharon?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Bitovich?
Hi.
Recognitions, school board recognition month. Usually we're recognizing others, and so we have cake. Recognize the board.
We just want to thank y'all for all of the work you do in your roles and the extra meetings and extra time and care for the community. It's clear that we have a board that cares about moving forward and also taking care of of our students and staff and families. So, thank you to just all that you do. It's a pleasure to work alongside you. I don't know if anyone else would like to share what you have to board.
It's an amazingly thankless task, and we are very honored always to have you guys doing this work on our behalf. You know how many hours it is. I know speaking with my fellow administrators, we deeply appreciate each and every single one of you. Thank you for everything you give. Meanwhile. We take tips.
I work with these guys. I work with them. Let's make this work clear. Do we want to go ahead and have the cake? Especially for our audience, but let's have the cake now. Let's get that going.
Yep.
Here. Thank you. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not. I will go check one more time. No, we do not have public comments.
Then I will not read the public comments. Jumping into our regular minute of consensus agenda. So can I get a motion to approve this consensus agenda? And when we approve this consensus agenda, can I get a second?
Second.
I get a vote.
One more comment? About the consensus agenda, about the person, I would just like to recognize Nick Nunley. It's a big loss that we have. He is, I personally know how much he held my granddaughter. He reaches out and he's been, I think, an asset to all these athletes at Manitou. It's certainly a big loss, so.
Wishing him the best.
Yeah, I can't really say that back because that's probably not official, but Nick is awesome. He went above and beyond with my daughter Nicole. He is a significant asset that we missed. He's going to a cool job, but that does less than our loss.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Agreed. He has certainly, as I mentioned, assisted Nicholas with Nicholas, and when he had a confession that was severe, mom probably let him minimize it, since that's the kind of mom I am. And Nick showed the appropriate care.
He's always welcome here in Manitou.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate that. Alright, so then we see the votes.
Johnson?
Hi.
Moeen?
Hi.
Sharon?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Bitovich?
Hi. And so we have Andrew Finity from, did I pronounce that correctly, Andrew? I just know you as Andrew from the Pass Bosse's. Marcy Palmer, our executive director of the Bosse's, is in California with the birth of her grandson. She seems like she timed it well. I know she's like, should she go? She snuck over. Her daughter was being induced. So, sorry, Marcy, if that was too much info, but we're really happy for her and congratulate her. And Andrew is new to the Pass Bosse's this year.
I am.
This is a great opportunity for him to present in front of a friendly, welcoming board.
Absolutely. I did that feeling initially, and I appreciate it. That's great to be here with everyone. So what I'm gonna do today is just go over kind of what we do as a Bosse's, highlighting a few selected areas in particular. And I'm kind of a walker when I present, so I apologize if I like, things back and forth, right? Okay, perfect. So, this is just highlighting, thank you so much.
This is just for his person. Your thing.
Thank you so much.
Sixty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, we modified the physical environment for you.
And that makes me
You advocated for yourself.
Yes. I like to full box then. So really, I just want to highlight a couple of things within the administrative unit. This means a school, a school district that is providing educational services to exceptional children, and that is responsible for local administration of these goals. So some of these roles that an AU has, an administrative unit has, and these are not exhaustive. Financial commitments. There's procedure for evaluating programs. There's accountability for state and federal funds. AUs have to have at least a half-time special ed director. They have to have a child find coordinator. There's reporting requirements both federally and through the state. And then adherence to licensing requirements for special education teachers and service providers. So on, within the Bosse's, we have nineteen staff members. Marcy started this eighteen years ago with two, and now we have nineteen. I'm not gonna read all this list to you. But we have a couple of things that I want to be very clear with. There's a lot of acronyms and indications we're all familiar with. TBI means teacher visually impaired. A BCBA is somebody who specializes in behavior modifications, in particular specifically with students with autism. A Coda, as you see the point eight Coda, that is a certified occupational therapy assistant. We have five SLPs, and SLP is a speech and language pathologist. And we have one SLPA, which is a speech and language pathology assistant. We have one transition coordinator, and our coordination for our transition program is fantastic at Woodland Park. And
You might want to explain what a transition coordinator is.
So it's going from really looking at a student who is more work oriented in getting them ready for the world. And so what we do is for a transition coordinator, their responsibilities are providing real tangible experiences within the community. This being the transition coordinator in our transition program is all about recycling. So they house in Woodland Park Middle School, and they have an exceptional program. I did a couple of observations there this semester. I've learned a lot about it. So they have community programs in which people recycle material. The students will deconstruct the material, sort them, and then the recycling companies will come up and actually bring the recycling material to Colorado Springs for it to be processed. There's three, there's three students currently in the transition program right now. And then we have one transition para. And the swap, which is school-to-work alliance program, serves all three districts, but they're not our employees. So let's kind of break down the nineteen staff members. So services, we have nineteen full and part-time Bosse service providers. District-wide, as a district, you have ten special education teachers, three special service providers, and twenty-one paraprofessionals, as well as four gifted teachers, and it's full and part-time. So this is where I start to bore people because I'm very passionate about it. But this is kind of breakdown of FAE, which means Free Appropriate Public Education. And when I think about FAE, I like to pose this kind of like a mathematical equation. We have substantive appropriateness plus procedural requirements will equal FAE. So in order to have FAE, a free, appropriate, public education, we have that substance piece, which is really the beating potatoes and the driving force behind IEPs. That's like the services, that's the goals, that's the accommodations. Those are the tangible management measurements in which we adhere to, and we check ourselves with data to make sure we're being as effective as possible. And then we have the procedural requirements. The procedural requirements, so as an administrative unit, we are rated, as per the state, with something called RDA, which is called result, which is based on results-driven accountability. So within the results-driven accountability, which is broken upon the high-quality instruction, the compliance, we have what is administered to all school districts for state reporting. Then they house that data, and they provide a determination letter. Now, the determination letter consists of both, and this is where I'm going, the administrative unit determinations. This looks at seventeen indicators, both from compliance and results. So the compliance piece looks at things such as suspensions, expulsions, disproportionality, timely evaluations, part C to part B, which means part C to part B transitions. Part B is from three years old to twenty-one. Part C is before. Secondary transitions, et cetera. So that's the compliance aspects. Then results is the graduation rates, the dropout rates, the state assessments. They really take into consideration what we call LRE, which is the least restrictive educational environment. They really want to see that eighty percent or above, right? In addition to LRE, we look at early childhood for results, the outcomes, parent involvement, and post-school outcomes. So with high-quality instruction, this is where we're looking at just the tangible measurements, because each student needs to grow in light of their unique circumstances on appropriately ambitious goals. So as a Bosse's unit, we try to look at, because we serve Manitou, of course, Kribble Creek and Woodland Park. We try to look at everyone's leverage points, everyone's action plans, and we try to make sense, and we create our own leverage plans based on what the existing districts are doing. And so this is kind of just a highlight of what we've been doing, and what we're trying to aspire to accomplishing, is strengthen specially-designed instruction and academic and functional skills through a robust professional learning community model. This looks at, at the beginning of the school year, we had a training with all special education staff, and I think it was fifty-six, if I'm not mistaken, who attended this training. We did a needs assessment. I think it was more than eighty-nine percent of the people said, teachers, said that they really want more support within social emotional learning. Because the implications from the ongoing COVID has really created a big chaotic situation where we have mental health being the precedence right now. So teachers really want more information, more curriculum around the social emotional learning, as well as math and writing interventions. So in doing so, we look at the monthly special education meetings as a platform and as a way to communicate evidence-based practices in coordination with the social emotional learning that is connected to the needs assessment. We strive to improve the intensive tier of support within each district's multi-tiered system of support for exceptional students. Our instructional consultant, who is an employee of Hill Springs, and Hill Springs is an evidence-based curriculum designed to meet the needs of the most significant learners who have difficulties. She is a fantastic resource, very, very knowledgeable. So she comes out and she has trained with Hill Rap, which is their reading curriculum. And then she has, there's a math curriculum too. So she does monthly coaching. She'll even actually do weekly coaching if anyone reaches out to her. At Kribble Creek, it's a weekly basis that people are reaching out, and she provides both in-person and remote instruction and support. As well as, we've really worked on the Effective Needs, which is our Effective Needs programs for students with either a serious or severe emotional disability, or kids with, that have OHI and ADHD being the primary factor, who need a more restrictive environment, need more social emotional instruction. And so we support them through the Effective Needs programs. As well as the SSN consultants. And SSN means Significant Student Needs. We strive to improve the monitoring of student progress within general education and individual goals. We do data shares in each building. We look at eighty percent of goals on target. So I just had, I just got a call with Woodland Park. We did our data share this evening. So what the teachers do is they break their, they break their IEP goals down into components. So we look at how many goals they have and the percentage of those goals that are on track to meeting progress, at least eighty percent. And right now, we've really had good results. And then we always want to support each district in strengthening best first instructional practices. Here's just the breakdown of the special education data as it applies to Manitou. And actually, the hundred has changed. It's a hundred and one as of today. And that one being right here, we have a new high school student. He just came in, so we've got a hundred and one students on IEPs. And I'll just give you a minute to absorb the information. Sorry.
So is that about eight percent of our population?
Yeah.
IEPs?
Eight to, yeah.
And that counts not, so this is all students registered with Manitou rather than students that are traveling to another district? This is just, this just, these are our students that we own that, right?
These, yes, but we have one from Kribble Creek as well, accessing the Harmony program, which is the Effective Needs program in Manitou.
Now, good question. Does that student count in any of our CMAS data? Do they count in our, counts in the AU matrix, I know, but does that count in any of our school-specific data? Or is that then attributed back to Kribble Creek for like CMAS and stuff? Colleen's saying yes.
It does, yeah.
Okay.
My data, yeah.
Kribble Creek.
Kribble Creek owns it.
Right, because that's our resident. Okay, yeah, just double checking.
I just know that it's in back.
Right. But eight percent is lower than the state average.
Yeah. Of twelve, twelve percent.
And lower than Kribble Creek and Woodland Park, so.
Yes. It is.
Kribble Creek's increased significantly over the last year or so.
Yes.
Our split that we do with the, out of the Bosse's, used to be like a sixty percent Woodland Park, thirty percent Manitou, ten percent Kribble Creek. That's since shifted a little bit, like Kribble Creek was at twelve percent, but that's even higher this year. Like the distribution.
Yeah, so two reasons for that generally is one is enrollment practice, second is identification through the process.
And last year at this point, it was a hundred and twenty-one, so that gives a little bit of perspective as well.
So that is interesting, as in, were those students stacked out? Have they moved? Have they changed districts of residence? I think, I'm just saying, for us, that's a question.
Yeah. I would love to do some research. I would, yeah.
But I mean, I think those are always, you know, where did those students go? I don't celebrate our students with disabilities, we think.
Either, or should we? So here's the breakdown of the data, and we have students on IEP, students not on IEPs. We have gifted, accounted for, and we have not gifted. So what I would say is that I, in looking at this, I have a lot more questions than I do actual understanding of the data, because I like to see it disaggregated to identify the elements contributing to the scores. I mean, of course, we have the contributing factor of the pandemic, right? And the fact that they were not tested last year. We definitely see in the areas of math, we definitely see a huge, and I can tell you the exact scores. We have a six ninety-four in two thousand and nineteen to a six ninety-six in two thousand and twenty-one, increase of two. But you can see the state level. This is the state average. I apologize for not explaining that before. That's a state average.
Right.
And then the percent above is the participation. So we've seen really a stagnant, and this is not atypical. This is just what's going on in terms of nationwide. And students on IEPs really not showing a high level of advancement within state measurements. So, yeah, I would like the desired data to look really at adherence to the programs, program specificity, engagement, and then high-quality instruction to really think about and conceptualize, digest this information in a reasonable manner. We do see, you know, gifted and talented as well, state.
And this is Manitou, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is Manitou. This is Manitou.
Right.
Oh, sorry.
Be interesting to see CMAS results this
Absolutely.
Consistently in person, or we've been in person, some of the consistency with the absences and attendance and covering classes is not what we wish, like.
It wasn't last, it's not, we're not reliving last year.
Yeah, so that's, that's a bonus.
Yeah, it is a bonus, absolutely. And then the last slide, I can speak to anything ESSR two and above, but I was not here during the ESSR one, so I apologize. But if you have any, if you have questions about it, I can absolutely find out for you.
Susie, can I?
Oh, there you go.
I was gonna say, ESSR one was a pretty minimal amount that first year.
Yeah, right?
I'm not gonna arm wrestle anybody with that amount this year after so many things were needed.
Yeah. And the ESSR two funding, we look at technology, designate stipends. So this is stipending teachers who are their own designate for an IEP meeting or designate for others. So they're stipend depending on the different, it's like a hierarchy. We have a one, a two, and a three. But a designate status of a three would mean they could go anywhere in the district, do initials, do evaluations. They can kind of be the oversight, the compliance checker, like I like to call it, regarding the IEP process. And then we did provide some incentivized pay to our Bosse's staff this year, which is our first time in terms of buying college. And now we have our ESSR's three funding coming up, which that means we have fifty-nine thousand, is that correct? So that's the biggest chunk of ESSR three funding that we have. So that's exciting. And Marcy's working with the contenders to identify usage, so. And last one is questions.
Questions, friends? Thank you so much, Andrew.
Thanks, Juan. We appreciate it.
Moving on to the board development, looking at the annual work plan, looks like governance policy one point three and one point four. All about me. Thoughts on this, reflections?
Well, just that number one point three point three, represent for outside parties, and that's in both stated positions. Should we put something in there around working with district staff first in communications, or?
Well, I think, you know, it depends on what, I mean, so for example, when somebody emails the board directly, all of us, I generally am the one who responds. I think if you mean in situations of media, right? I, you know, we certainly can. I don't know, we don't really have somebody designated per se, but I'm generally not gonna be like, yes, I mean, but that, but then it gets into person-specific versus role-specific. So if we wanted to, we could write something around, you know, collaboration with appropriate school individuals, or it could be just our executive officer, and then superintendent, so the board superintendent will collaborate to decide appropriate methods of communicating with the media. I don't know. I mean, however you want to.
I mean, it's not a problem. I mean, you haven't
Nobody, nobody's been calling me.
I'm just saying that if it did have a different board, it's possible.
Exactly. It can't, it can't be person-dependent. It has to be, right?
That's all that I'm saying.
Is that something we would want to spend some time on in a work session or discuss now? Do we need a statement in there regarding communication from the board president that deals with the media, or is that covered anywhere else in policy?
Well, I was wondering if it was covered somewhere else. It seems like it might be. I can't tell you where.
I feel like it is in section K. Let me pull that up.
Section K?
There's a section K. It's around, all around community relations, and it talks about, I read it recently.
I'll give you a
Yeah. Assistant.
Same way?
Yeah.
It says on policy K A dash R, but communications within the board of education community. So if you want to
What is it?
K dash R.
Yes, one.
Yep. Ah, each building's parent newsletter show.
This one I remember.
Y'all didn't know that one.
This one is very old, two thousand and seven as well.
But it doesn't cover the president.
Doesn't, no.
So would this be the other appropriate place to have that, because it has the community?
So one point three point three though is a pretty specific question or things that the board president can speak to. It's basically announcing board stated positions and decision preparation areas delegate president. So it's not like you're gonna go and give a public comment on whatever. Oh, not anything. I don't want to minimize the whole thing. It limits your ability.
Very limited. I'm not just gonna go, yeah.
I don't know, but I think it's, I think that seems like a narrow and a focus that those are guard roles that I think any board president can probably stay with there, even. But on one point three point seven, we need to change director to superintendent.
Perfect, yes.
So it will make some change, so it shows that we are paying attention.
Indeed. That's three directors we've caught today. We're getting work done.
When we find things that should have been, we just addressed them, and it'll, it'll come up as a, at the bottom if you ever, ever when was this change? So see at the bottom, this is last month by Kendall, isn't it, Kelly? It's like a typo, just, and it's already been approved before. We just made those edits.
Thank you for doing that.
Because it's
You don't want to see all those.
GP one point three point six. So any thoughts on, I've heard from Natalie, I've heard from Jack on any, any changes to that one point three three to include anything regarding speaking to the media? Does that need changing or name?
I would agree with May.
How strong do you feel? I'm not very strong. Nobody's worried. I'm not worried. Okay.
Anything else but that one? Anything else with that one?
Oh, did you see, I'm focused, or it does say something about responsiveness to local media. I think that's typically where we're working together. It's different if I'm put on administrative leave, or, I'm just saying, we've seen that in our, and clearly we work more than that.
Clearly.
It happened in a very school district, just once.
However, we already do have, as I did double check our suspension plan, and so it says that basically the next person, blah, 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 and then if that person can't, the board will step in, so, there you go.
That's right.
Covered by multiple policies intersecting each other. Get ready, Eric.
I remember listening last year.
Did we hives?
Yeah.
Okay, good, that's the appropriate response. Do we need to approve that? No, okay. What red legislative updates do we have? What are, what is, what is this state board or the government doing now?
Well, we just, I just posted these two, because I think that, these are things that we're looking at with the High Speak Alliance, and Susie and Eric participate in this as well. Still new in legislative session, and so this, this one particularly is around student academic growth. Essentially, what it would do is not allow a collective measure. So previously, you could use the school performance framework or the district performance framework, the ratings that the state provides. And you could say, all right, portion of Gary's evaluation is gonna come from that collective measure, but what this is doing is saying, no, it all has to be individual to the teacher. Also, some questions here is that it rules out growth measures, which I'm really fascinated by that, because oftentimes people want growth measures in it, so we'll see how that turns out.
Do you think this is kind of a road Senate bill, one ninety-one?
I think it is.
Or do you think it's, I mean, do you think it's eventually moving to local measures? I mean, what?
I think it's that and it's local measures more, so, because if you get away from growth, then you're no longer having a CMAS measurement, so exactly, really that, it's gonna be more a site, you know, like autonomy at the district level.
Well, that, yeah, because I couldn't decide with this one particularly, if it's, no, we're gonna go all proficiency and mastery, and we're looking for this. But then we're, if we're gonna allow alternative pathways at the local level, then.
I think it's alternative.
You think it's gonna go that, okay.
That's, I think, that's.
Yeah, I mean, that's the gist I've been getting, but I just don't know, okay, interesting.
And then the other one, I think that, it's actually, Susie and I were talking about it today, and in terms of para, para retirees, that because there's a staffing shortage, you may not have to sit out that time period between between when you retire from para, we don't know the detail specifically of what that means for para contributions, but in some ways, this could really help our staffing shortage. I think the question we have is what is the cost to the school district in terms of our contributions, or in terms of any other benefits that we might need to provide, and I don't know if we have specifics on that yet. The other one that I didn't post here, but it's gonna be very important, is the proposed sort of buy-down of the budget stabilization. There's some strings tied to that, that could be connected with voucher programs, so there's a lot of different critical viewpoints here, so as we learn more about what's actually gonna be proposed, I think the board will want to understand that really more specifically, because that's a huge one, what does that buy-down mean? And we haven't had any specifics, so it's just in the initial talks. We'll be, we'll be on those calls every Thursday morning for about an hour. So if there's a bill that comes across, or you hear about it, you want some more information, or, you know, that's, that's a good place for us to go back and get a sense, and there is one. Well, there's just some others that are just being talked about, so happy to, to bring that more to, if you have something specific you want to know more about here, just let me know, let us know.
And then with the infrastructure funding, where that's pretty, is it just buses?
It was, actually, I think it's any kind of capital improvement, that's my understanding, I could, I could, I can find out, but it would be building materials, that then they do not have to pay the little sales tax, which, which is a big deal. So as long as I would say they don't increase the cost, and so how do you make sure that that gets regulated? Those are some of the updates.
Appreciate that. Words self-reflection, I think one of the things we might want to talk about, and we want to continue with after our discussion, say, using our governance policy as our purpose and reflection point, or we want to look at, you know, using it, if we want to focus more on the board agreements, focus on each one of those at a different meeting or in their totality and use that as our means of judgment and reflection.
I would like to do that.
Would you like to focus those? I mean, list that up, because I think we've been, become pretty rote and a bit pedantic about. So I'm thinking about we embrace conflict and seek to resolve positively respectfully. We address one topic at a time, we value diversity and multiple points of view in order to maximize submission. I allow vegetable and meat toppings. We respect others' views and thoughts through active communication and participation, I thought, or communication, and our dialogue was much more engaged and much more robust this evening, so. Other thoughts on our working agreements?
I, I would like to discuss at some point, you know, padding. And we use this working agreement to make decisions in an informed way, blah, blah, if we want to round that out with some highlights, so capture that.
Results or decision. You wanna write that phrase and bring it to, or show it to us?
And then the other thing is, the board's purpose, kind of addressed it earlier, where it says, A achieves appropriate results for students at an appropriate cost, and we don't, I'm assuming we don't define what appropriate means at any point. Do we define appropriate, and then we avoid unacceptable actions and situations, and like, what's unacceptable? Like, those were all kind of vague terms, I don't know.
Generally, yeah, so generally, that policy is fairly standard in most policy governance boards, and the idea being, and I don't, I'm not an expert on policy government, so anybody jump in with Carver's theories. But the idea being that it's not well-defined, because it can change at any time, I mean, obviously, like, we had to move to COVID very quickly, and I'm just gonna use this as an example, and it's saying, no, that's not a good example, but we had to suddenly go with an online program. It wasn't the most stunning program, we ended up not loving it, but at the time, it was high cost, but we didn't really have many more appropriate choices at the time, I would say that would be one of those things, to come back then and say, you know, we violated that, and say to the superintendent, like, that was a violation, because it costs so much money and we didn't get the results out of it. At the time, that was the appropriate decision, because we were in a rock and a hard place and had to pivot quickly. I think, you know, with time, we made some different decisions, I don't know, I mean.
Okay, I would say A is our end statement, and B is the executive limitation. Are we meeting the ends through, through our appropriate results and avoiding those executive limitations?
Okay, I appreciate that.
And so what you're saying is, or asking is, we replace the board's purpose with our working agreements.
As our means for reflection.
Okay, and so at the beginning of meetings, we'll state those as ever.
I don't know that we need to, I think we can, I mean, we can state our purpose at the beginning, kind of like our intro, and then at the end, that can be our cap, you know, closing or launch is the working agreement, I don't know. Yeah.
The only reason I like it upfront is, yeah, given the reminder of how we're gonna engage.
Do you want me to do that out loud, or do you want to do it kind of like everybody take a moment to ground themselves?
I mean, pointing attention to it. I don't know, maybe out loud does that, I mean, I'm not certain anyway, I just think, for me, it helps put ourselves in that frame of mind of, I'm going to pause, I'm going to seek understanding, I'm going to look for others' points of view before entering into my own section. Just how I'm gonna conduct myself, so that's why I like it upfront.
Okay. Instead of or in addition to, and then we can use it still as the point of reflection at the end. I mean, yeah, I can do both, or, yeah.
Or we could alternate over the other.
I like the alternating. We have two meetings a month now.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, because we could have the working agreements for the work session.
That was my next question, so work agreements.
And the work session and the purpose for the regular, oh my gosh.
It just.
We are just doing amazing things tonight.
I would announce that the meeting was discussed as part of our board reflection of the result.
We're making progress. Okay, so you feel good about that?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Deep breath and adjourn.
I am pursuant to Colorado revised statute titled twenty-four, article six, section four oh two, at subsection four S, to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. The particular matter that is to be discussed behind closed doors is part of the superintendent's annual evaluation. We have to see who's gonna be in the room, who's gonna be in the room.
So all, we read all board members, we're gonna invite Elizabeth. So board members, da-da-da, and invite superintendent, what was the name?
Board members. Six forty-one, is there a second thing?
Second.
Thank you. Johnson.
Hi.
Moeen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Bit of a.
Hi.
Thank you all, you're welcome to stay, but as you all know.